Call to me, daughter. Consider approval of January 6th regular session and January 6th closed session meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is, we have a couple of public hearings. Ordinance 2003 to consider rezoning 6.21 acres of parcel on South Hill Street from General Highway Business District to R10. Mr. Robinson, would you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item we have up tonight is a 6.21 acre parcel which is accessed from Boyett Drive and South Hill Street. The applicant is Chris Moon on behalf of South Albemarle Baptist Church. The property right now is zoned General Highway Business District and what they're proposing is to zone it to Single Family Residential District R10. Let me pull up real quick so you can get your bearings there. It's this parcel right here. If you'll see, this is South Second Street, Business 52, right across from Rock Creek Park. This is Boyett Drive going up the hill here, both of these, Boyett and South Hill. So this property does front on both of those. And, let's see here. This might help you a little bit. This is 2427 out here.
South Albemarle Baptist Church is there on the corner.
Right here, yeah. Just a second there. There you go. This big wooded parcel back here.
And they're advocating to build some houses along South Hill?
Yeah, that's not the purpose of the meeting tonight, but what is proposed is that they would probably eventually come back and do a, either a minor or a major subdivision for between three and four lots total, and those would be along South Hill here. Just kind of cut those off of that. It's planned that the majority of this property would remain to be used by the church at this time.
What was that about the church?
The church would remain, most of the property would remain with the church at that time following that subdivision. But for tonight, they're proposing for the entirety of the property to be rezoned to R10.
Are we losing some valuable business frontage property there?
Not really. There's, I think there's some easement restrictions with the off-ramp there and everything with DOT in terms of accessing this lot. First of all, you've got, I don't believe right here DOT wants any kind of access to this because of the off, because of the on-ramp, I should say. And then you go a little further down here where you may be able to access it, and it's pretty steep right through there, and there's a lot of rock as well, so it's probably going to be a little bit difficult to develop that. I know people have looked at it in the past and just hasn't happened for whatever reason. As mentioned, this is owned GHBD right now. They're requesting R10. As you can see there, to the north of this is North Carolina 2427, and that is GHBD as well to the north there, and the rest, and then also to the east, and the rest to the south and the west is primarily R10. There are no services currently provided to the unaddressed parcel, tax record 33584, but they are available nearby, including in the residential neighborhood there along Hill and Boyett Street. The currently adopted land use plan classifies the majority of the property as general residential. There would be a small portion of it which could possibly be considered commercial, but these areas are located within the city's corporate limits and public utilities are provided. The areas classified as general residential typically consist of lots ranging from one quarter to one half acre in size and have an established network of roads that are well-connected but often lack sidewalks. The general residential classification also features areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate cul-de-sacs. Compact residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, landscape features, and other natural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. And development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity, impacts on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of adequate infrastructure. That is from your 2028 land use plan. In the environment, there is no watershed or floodplain considerations for this property. And, just to go back to the future land use there, let me pull that up for you as well. Here's your overall future land use map for the city, and we are looking down here in this portion right here where my cursor is. So you can see this is the end of Boyett Street, this is Hill Street right here, so the majority of the property would be in that orange. It would probably be a small portion of it that would be in the commercial. The parcel in question is owned GHBD. The land use plan places the property as being primarily general residential. Commercial uses encompass a wide breadth of depth of non-residential uses. Key development considerations are lot size, ranging typically from one quarter to one half acre, we covered that. Given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan and its proximity to a major thoroughfare, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be congruous with the city's future land use plan. Planning Board did hear this on January 9th and by an eight to oh vote, eight to zero vote, recommended unanimously to rezone the request and adopt a statement of consistency with the future land use map as provided by staff.
I'm always curious about city limit, the way cities get outlined. They look like they're designed by a committee. And it just, you know, like a snake crawling through. Do we ever consider smoothing out our city limits, you know, our boundaries of our city to make it look, I don't know.
Last major annexation, we actually hired a firm to come in and do all that, and they did it. As you go up north, if the road is the boundary, we go 200 foot to the outside of that road. That's the way they did that area.
If you look at the charters from a lot of the old cities, and you can still see them in some of the small towns, they're almost a perfect circle or a perfect square that were done at that time. But then, of course, we've added on over the years, and that's never a perfect process. So really, unless you do it as a, almost at this point, it has to be almost a legislative act, I would think, to get something that clean.
Well, after our meeting, our hearing in here with the COG people, and he was talking about how many people have Albemarle addresses and so forth, I looked that up, and 26,760 people live in Albemarle.
With Albemarle.
Address, zip code, yeah.
There are people, if you ask them where they live, they have to say Albemarle because that's their address. And it just seems like strange that our population's only 16,000 when 27,000 people actually live in Albemarle.
Council, have any further questions of Mr. Robinson? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Council, your wishes, you need to pull up your consistency statements and choose one of those if somebody is planning to make a motion.
Move approval of ordinance 20-03.
Second.
Have a motion to approve ordinance 2003. Which consistency statement are you citing?
The first one.
Using the first consistency statement.
Do you want that read into it?
Please do so.
The Albemarle Planning and Zoning Board strike that. Albemarle City Council finds the action to amend the city's zoning map, record 33584 from Zone GHBD/General Highway Business District to R10/Single Family Residential District to be consistent with the adopted 2028 land use plan. The 2028 land use plan calls for general residential on the land of interest. City's R10 zone will assist the lands of interest reach their intended goal of general residential and will achieve the public interest.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall, a second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Glad you caught that with the planning board on there. We're trying to make this a little bit easier to do, but I didn't catch that part yet.
That's okay.
Fix that next time around.
That's okay.
Mr. Robinson, anything else on that?
No.
Moving on to public hearing, show this number four. Ordinance 2004, consider rezoning of 8.75 acre parcel from General Highway Business District to R10. Mr. Robinson, if you would introduce.
Okay. This is a zoning map amendment request for property tax record 4171. Physical address of this is, it's off of US 52, my good ways, it's back up in the, behind that first set of properties along the highway there, primarily, pretty much landlocked. The property is accessible from the end of Johnson Street right now, though there is a small section of access there. It is 8.75 acres, and the applicant is Larry Hatley. He's the real estate agent for property owner Claudine Carter. The existing zoning is General Highway Business District, GHBD, and what is proposed is Single Family Residential District, R10. Let me see if I can pull that up for you real quick here. Okay. This is the property in question right here highlighted. I believe this is RPM Motors right there. Johnson Street does come down. I think it's kind of a gravel or a dirt road at that point, but it does come down to the There you go.
Johnson, the northern end of Johnson, tell, show me where that is.
She comes at the connector, yeah.
That's what I thought. Comes right at the connector.
That's right.
As does Blanch.
Right.
Down right here.
Okay.
Right down.
Yeah, there you go, just get your.
Thank you very much. Remember it was all residential? Well, yeah, I have. Not that far.
As you can see there, to the, on all sides except for the west is Single Family Residential District. There is some GHBD there. This is a little bit separated from that property there. There's a sewer easement, and there's a little bit of a drop-off in back of that property there as well, so it doesn't, can't get right back there real easily from Highway 52 at this time. There are no services currently provided to the unaddressed parcel, tax record 4171. They are available nearby. Coming down Johnson Street would probably be the most likely access point for most of those. The land use plan classifies the majority of the property as general residential, and let me see if I can pull that up for you as well. Maybe up already. No. Okay. No, that's not it. As you can see, this is Johnson and Blanch right here, and this is the property back here. So that is your general residential, future land use there.
About how far would that property be from 52 north?
It's several hundred feet. Let me see.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't.
Yeah.
It's actually, help me.
It's about 275, 280 feet to the closest point of it right there, so it's back there a little ways.
Behind where Morgan Motor used to be.
Right.
It's behind there.
If you remember the house that was taken down, that's right here, so kind of, kind of.
Mr. Robinson, if my memory serves me correct, I believe there's, I want to say four new houses that have been built recently on Johnson Street.
That's correct.
So, in regards to that, is this on the south side of Devotion, where the Devotion Baptist Church used to be? Is that where this property is?
To be honest, I'm not.
Yes, all the way at the south end of Johnson Street, where the pavement ends, is the property directly front of.
Okay. Yeah, because there's four new houses that have been, I don't know if you've been through there. Is it five?
Yeah, a couple blocks up. After you turn off 52 right there, yeah, it's like Gray, corner of Gray Street, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So a portion of the westernmost section of the property, very small portions classified as commercial on the land use plan. The majority of the area is classified as residential. This property is exempt from watershed ordinances. There is a 1.6 acre section of this primarily around the eastern and southern boundary of the property that are in the special flood hazard area and subject to floodplain ordinances. Would not think that it would be difficult to develop, though, at the, all the same. The sections of land in question are zoned General Highway Business District, City of Albemarle, 2028 land use plan places the properties being primarily general residential, the small section being commercial. Key development considerations include floodplain considerations, compatibility with adjacent land uses, and infrastructure consideration. The applicant is asking for single-family residential zoning, the city's most low-density residential district. Given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan and its proximity to a major thoroughfare, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be congruous with the city's future land use plan. Planning Board heard this request on January 9th and unanimously by a vote of nine to oh, recommended that council approve with a statement of consistency as provided by
Council, have any questions, Mr. Robinson? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Hall. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Move approval of ordinance 20-04 with the consistency statement.
Second. Would you read the consistent statement, please?
Bring it back up. City, Albemarle City Council finds the action to amend the city's zoning map, tax records 4171 from Zone GHBD/General Highway Business District, R10/Single Family Residential District to be consistent with the adopted 2028 land use plan. 2028 land use plan calls for general residential on the land of interest. City's R10 zone will assist the lands of interest reach their intended goal of general residential and will achieve the public interest.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next on our agenda is announced allegations. Number five is opioid overdose prevention. Stanley County and our health director, David Jenkins, will be making the presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Opened up just a brief overview of some of our local initiatives to address the opioid issues here in Stanley County. So, I'm going to start this presentation off with basically a question. Why do people, individuals utilize drugs? Obviously, there's a variety of reasons folks will utilize drugs. Personally, I can attest to physical pain from having surgeries previously years ago. Even more recently, they would prescribe a whole bottle of prescription drugs for someone post-surgery. Availability of prescription drugs is readily out there and available. Psychological pain is also another issue that people utilize drugs to cope with. It's just a coping mechanism, excitement, relieve stress, overcome boredom. As part of this, I wanted to kind of point out adverse childhood experiences. That's ACES. A lot of children that go through abuse, neglect, or household dysfunction, they'll come up as they become a teenager and then into adulthood, and they carry this with them when they turn to drugs and alcohol and even tobacco to cope with this. So it's just another coping mechanism. But there's actually a number that can be assigned to that through a test that can determine someone's childhood experiences and whether they're more likely to utilize drugs or not. So, just want to bring that to your attention if you're not aware of that. So Stanley County data, as you can see, we've had overdoses since 17. It's gone up a little bit in 2018. 2019, we had a reduction in overdoses. The thing about using prescription drugs, it's highly addictive and highly dependent. So, obviously, we were number one for several months in Stanley County, unfortunately, based on a rate for our population. And I came on here in 2018, it was brought to my attention very early on that we need to find some way to help address this, and these are just some of the initiatives I'm going to share with you from the Health Department standpoint and EMS standpoint as well.
Davey, will you step closer to the mic?
Oh, certainly. I'm sorry.
Much better.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you very much.
I'll hug this thing a little bit more than.
Thank you very much.
So this is just a graph of some of our opioid overdose deaths from 99 to 2016. In 99, there was approximately 100 unintentional opioid deaths, and 2016, it was as many as 1,300. As you can see, heroin and other synthetic narcotics made up about 60% of those unintentional deaths, which is very alarming. I mentioned the potency, again, being high risk for addiction and dependence. So, with the unprecedented availability of these cheap heroin and fentanyl, more people are dying. And most of you all probably heard of carfentanil and fentanyl. A lot of this is being created in labs, synthetic versions, very potent. For example, fentanyl is 100 times more potent than morphine. So you can imagine if this is being produced in a lab and people get their hands on this, how potent it can be and why it's causing deaths in our county, our state, and our nation. And the financial awards for fentanyl are staggering. I mean, $1,000 worth, for example, this is a Bloomberg report of heroin purchased in Gulfport, Mississippi, you get profit of $4,000. Fentanyl's purchased in China, $7.8 million profit, so very lucrative, obviously, with fentanyl market. Next up, I want to kind of talk a little bit about the overdose prevention measures. Before I do, I want to ask Mr. Dale Chandler with EMS, come up and talk a little bit about the community paramedic program.
So, as, am I loud enough? As part of our opioid prevention measures, we were funded through a Blue Cross Blue Shield research grant. What it does is it allows for 12-hour a day coverage for seven days a week. We actually have a community paramedic on duty all seven days of the week. Their main priority is to combat the opioid epidemic. They respond to all opioid-related calls while they're on duty. If, for some reason, an opioid call comes out in the middle of the night, they, within our program, they have 24 to 72 hours to follow up with that patient to make initial contact. Part of their process while they do this, they intend to follow these patients until they get into treatment. Sometimes contact is an issue, but we're finding ways to overcome that throughout the process. But our main end goal is to get these patients into treatment, because without some sort of inpatient treatment, without being able to see a physician regularly, it's almost impossible for them to overcome this issue. Currently, we have had two patients that have completely gone through a rehab program or are still successful in their fight against opioid addiction. At this moment, we have 12 patients that are currently enrolled with Monarch, who is our main partner within Stanley County. And the one thing that we're particularly proud of is this is actually the first program of its kind in the United States. We actually had Wisconsin contact us today about our program to find out more information. So, part of the drop in overdoses, we can attribute it to our community paramedic division. So, it's been successful so far with what we're doing. I'm going to turn it back over to Dave now.
Thank you, Dale.
Dave, when did that start?
It started June of last year.
Of 19?
Of 19, yes, ma'am.
So we're six months into it.
Yes, ma'am.
And also roughly, let me ask this question. How many, it says currently we have had two patients complete the rehab program. Out of how many?
So, it's kind of a hard number to give you a definite answer. One of our biggest, like I said, one of our biggest issues that we come across is follow-up contacts. Either they don't have a working cell phone, they don't want our help, they don't answer when we call. So generally, I would say, you know, round rough guesstimate, probably of our patients who interact with us and follow up, it's roughly 25% of our patients, and I can't give you a rough number. I'd be more than happy to look that up, but.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So part of, again, Health Department initiatives, we had some, several drop boxes that were donated. We have them set up at Oakboro Police Department, Albemarle Police Department, and Norwood Police Department. The main thing is to reduce access, get rid of the drugs so they're not in the medicine cabinets where people can get a hold of them, that type of thing. Another initiative is provision of naloxone through a Cardinal grant. We were able to provide some naloxone, which helps to reduce an overdose, and this was made available to some of our community partners as well as some of our emergency responders. Last year, we were awarded a Human Resources and Services Administration Rural Communities Opioid Response Grant, and that was a million dollar grant, and this is the one that we're currently working with our community partners on. And the focus is prevention, treatment, and recovery. And some of our partners, I'll mention, it's Nazareth Child and Family Connection, Will's Place, and Gateway of Hope. Those are three of our main partners here locally that we're working with on this grant. So as I mentioned, prevention, the goal is to provide more CPR and naloxone trainings, recovery messaging, more screening tools for our medical doctors and our MPs, have better referral processes in place, and educate local physicians on the STOP Act as well. From a treatment perspective, certified 30 patients, served 30 patients with a Medicaid-assisted treatment program, the MAP program, using best practices. Substance use disorder, recruitment and retention, trained providers to screen for SUDs, develop detox and treatment network, provide transportation to care. Transportation's been a huge issue here. Link uninsured men and women to additional human services, and we're coordinating some crisis intervention trains for law enforcement. A lot of this is still in the works, but we're, hopefully this will take place this year soon. The recovery piece, obviously navigation of behavioral health services, there's a lot of good services out there, navigating the services can be difficult. We're trying to get the messaging set up where people know where to go to get the assistance they need. Transportation, again, peer support groups, support groups of families, sober housing, group sessions and sober housing, AA meetings, and job training opportunities. The idea is to get these folks to be contributing back into society again once they get clean and recovered, and get the network in place to get them where they can contribute to society again. Another grant we had an opportunity to take advantage of was the Department of Health and Human Services Community Linkages to Care Grant for our $275,000. That was a very good complement to the HERSA grant that we received earlier this year. And we're working with Open Hands of Davidson County in conjunction with Queen City Needle Exchange. Grace Place is our local affiliate that work for those folks. They're located on 132 Church Street right here in Albemarle. They provide a lot of the services to the community currently. Again, this information, best practices from CDC, NOKI Harm Reduction Coalition, NOKI Department of Health and Human Services. So, why is this a big focus at federal and state level? This is just some little statistics for you. Over 50% of hepatitis C cases are attributed to IV drug use with a median cost of $90,000. 109 heart valve replacement surgeries, median cost of $251,000. So here's a quote from Dr. Schreins of UNC Division of Infectious Diseases. 73% of patients with drug-associated infective endocarditis were uninsured or on Medicaid. This means the cost is obviously being absorbed by patients, individual hospitals, and our government budgets. So this is why this is a real focus, because we end up having to pay this cost in the end. So if we can get out through treatment, prevention, and control measures in place, the hope is to get out in front of this. So solution, evidence-based strategies, education, safe syringe programs, screenings, and referrals to care. Somebody deserve the requirements of state law, syringe disposal, distribution of new syringes, security plans, addressing site personnel and equipment, referrals to behavioral health services, education's a big component of this, prevention of disease transmission, treatment options including Medicaid-assisted treatment, and naloxone distribution and training as well. as well. Annual reporting requirements, target population, obviously, we're, Stanley County Health Department is acting as a fiduciary agent, so a lot of this data reporting is we're taking responsibility for, and again, working with our community partners to make sure the work is done. A lot of data that's being reported on a monthly basis, and naloxone kits are distributed. This, all this data is going to be important moving forward to show that we're making progress and being able to help address the issues in the community. So one reason we feel this is going to be, hopefully be successful, even though in the early beginnings of this work being done, is we're utilizing the knowledge and the effort and resources of our local community partners that are already here doing this work, and enable to fund them and just be, again, assist them as needed. And a lot of this is getting the messaging out and just working cooperatively together to address these issues. So just want to thank you again for your time. Again, a brief overview. If anybody has any questions or comments, be happy to try to answer any of those.
Yeah, I've got a question. You mentioned transportation a couple of times, and I've heard that before in relation to homeless issue, getting people where they need to be. What type of transportation would be ideal for that? And also, do any of the grants that you have either address that or say it?
Excellent question. We were actually able to purchase through this grant a vehicle for Will's Place and Gateway of Hope, and they're going to be able to utilize those vehicles to help transport people, and that's one of their goals as part of that HERSA grant, so to help address that. One's a large passenger van, one's an SUV, so.
Dave, approximately, just approximately?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the dollar amount of grants that you all have written and received in the past year?
I think it's about 1.4 million right now. So we were fortunate enough to work with Mr. Chandler and his group on the community paramedic program with a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant as well earlier on. And we're continuing to try to find grant money that'll come from federal and state dollars to help support these efforts. Obviously, we don't have to lean too heavily on local dollars, so that's part of our goal has been to try to get the grants to support this work, so.
Good. Dave, the million dollars that you presented, I was at the county commissioners' meeting, just happened to be there in September of last year when you all got it and did the presentation to them. That is a two-year grant or a three-year?
A three-year grant, yes, ma'am.
And is that three-year grant starting October 1 of last year, federal year?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're good through then September 30 of 2022?
Sounds good to me.
Is that about what we're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. The other grant is a 33-month grant. Kind of odd, if it's just an odd number.
Federal fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In that, I was a bit concerned, and then I listened, and I'm still a bit concerned, but I'm still open.
Yes, ma'am.
That the services primarily in this county are in Albemarle. Mental health services, DSS services, addictions, whatever, SUD services, whatever, are primarily right here. And if I'm understanding correctly or heard correctly, the houses are in Locust?
Gateway of Hope has got some sober housing that they're, that they've established over there. So that's kind of getting towards the western side of the county a little bit more, and that's kind of what we're working towards. At some point, we definitely need to cover the entire community, not just Albemarle itself.
But the housing that we're using currently for actual housing is Gateway in Locust?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. How many are in?
I do not have that information offhand.
I mean, you're right.
Good question, but I can probably find out for you and get back to you. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it seems another problem too is people that want to go to treatment, where are they referring to as far as residential, resident?
Yes, sir. And having a strong referral process in place and having that information out there and make sure it's readily available is one of the goals as well that we're working towards.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions?
I guess the fear that people have of transportation with that kind of patient is overwhelming. Do you have any, anything developing about how to get to people concerning travel? That seems to be a major problem.
Yes, ma'am, that's a good point. Some of the partners we're working with, they were former addicts that were addicted, and there are a lot of the ones that are volunteering and assisting with the transportation of these individuals that can really relate to these individuals that are in need of care, and that's what makes it so effective, I believe.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, these statistics are very staggering. I mean, when you think about Stanley County, and it seems, you know, in the last year, we've been at or very near the top as far as, you know, overdose-related deaths. And, you know, it's something that we've all got to be very concerned with, and, you know, thank you to law enforcement, to all our EMS and fire agencies throughout the county because I can tell you, you know, having a scanner in our home, it's every single day we hear those tones go off, and it's, they're sending EMS and a fire department to respond to an overdose, and it's gut-wrenching to hear that, really on a daily basis. So thank you and everybody else that's coping with this stuff and looking for ways to improve and reduce the amount of deaths that we're seeing here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. At the end of the day, we just want to give people a second chance.
Absolutely.
And I just want to say attaboy to Dale Chandler, because when it came out in the newspaper that we were, that we, I mean, I think Toby did an article, I don't know who did it, but when that first came out just recently, you know, when it, when we were the number one per capita overdose in the state, and now we are the only county in the nation who has such a program. So attaboy to you, Dale, and to all those folks with whom you are working, you know, it sort of counteracts that bad news that we got. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
You stick around a minute, I have an unannounced allegation coming up next in case you have a question.
Yes, sir.
Stick around there.
Sure.
Moving into unannounced allegations, Bradley Kimry, who wants to talk about opioids.
Hey, how are y'all doing? My name is Bradley Kimry.
Sir, will you step up to the mic, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Bradley Kimry, Bradley Del Kimry. I'm a Stanley County native. Today's a big day for me because Easter was my first time being clean from opioids, and today marks nine months that I'm still clean, and it's just the beginning of the process. And I kind of seen the call of this meeting as a spiritual marking for me and what these guys are doing. God bless you, really. They are doing a lot. But I sat through a task meeting a few months ago, and I heard some things that really rung a bell in my head. You know, I know all we have here is a lake and a couple of rivers, but I was, I heard that Albemarle is a port city for fentanyl and heroin. Why is that? I also heard that they're being watched, everybody bringing it in, they know who's bringing it in, they know who's running it. Why is it still going on? But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to combat, to help heal the ones that are broken, that are still living. The NAe My project through Four Rivers has, they do have three, almost three locations off of 200 in Locust. They house five individuals. They're working on the third location. That's with Mr. Larry Wilkins. He's a good man, and he's doing a lot for the community. But, you know, I'm not where I want to be yet. I've still got to get some of my ducks in the row, but I'm working on that to the best of my abilities. But the recovery for people, they don't know where to go to get help. And the biggest thing that turns people away from calling for help is, no offense, but is a uniform, a badge. That is scary, because if somebody from poverty lifestyle, and out of the 26,000 people in Albemarle, I believe that over a third of them is suffering from opioid addiction. And that's not just in the poverty scale. That is outreach of all of us, everywhere. But for somebody that's from the streets, if they're seen talking to somebody with a badge or in a uniform, they're instantly labeled as something they're not, and it could be life-threatening. It could be a cold body in the streets with a gunshot wound instead of a needle mark, and that is serious. So I've, through Will's Place, they provided a peer support program, and by the grace of God, I was able to get in through the door there and learn a little bit. Because there's people that won't help, and like this gentleman was saying, with the transportation, have kind of become like a free agent for this, if you will. And we've got some people, like yesterday, I had to get a guy to Charlotte, had no way to do so, but thank God, concerned citizens stepped in and said, "I'll take him." But that's just an everyday thing. There's people that won't help but don't know where to go and get it. They don't want to be seen calling a hotline or known for calling a hotline or speaking with the law because that could be extremely vital. But the harm reduction thing is, I believe that'll be very, very beneficial, not just to reduce the diseases that's transmitted, but also to keep a watch and to plant seeds of inspiration to those that know about it. And speaking with active addicts, they have no idea about this. They don't know about the needle exchange, they don't know about the Good Samaritan's Law, they don't know about any of the outreach programs. It's not being advertised nowhere, not in the paper, not on flyers, not on the news, not on Facebook. And that advertisement is necessary, I believe, because word of mouth only goes so far and can only reach, I mean, it does do a lot of good, but I believe if there was some type of public notifications to let people be more aware of what's going on in the community because as a citizen of lower lifestyle, we don't hear these things, we don't know, you know? And I am extremely honored that y'all have an open door policy tonight, and thank you all. But this opioid is more than just a problem. It's serious, and I'm watching people, I love people I've known for a long time, just fall off like flies, and they don't have to. And that's what bothers me when I heard the man say that, and I hate to speak without him being present, so I won't call his name, but if everybody that is dealing with the drugs, that is dealing the drugs, that's bringing them in, that's distributing them out, they've got people coming from other cities, other counties, from far away, here to Albemarle to pick it up, why are they being allowed to do so? Instead of charging the individual when they get caught with it or when they overdose or whatever the case may be, they get sentenced to jail time. And in that jail time, their tolerance goes up, excuse me, their tolerance goes down as their cravings go up. And then they're released back into the street with a court date, and they overdose. And now they're just a cold body. Or instead of the ones that are bringing it to this beautiful city, this beautiful county, it doesn't have to be polluted the way it is, but I see that there's so many different good lives going to waste when they don't have to. These people don't have to die. We, I mean, and I feel like I'm partially allowing it because I know about it. And being an addict, I have introduced people to it, and I'm doing everything I can to make up for that now because it hurts me deep in my soul. But I just, I believe that there should be more advertisement for the help that is being provided.
In what way are you saying advertise? That's what I was going to get at. How do you advocate to advertise?
Well, the only thing that I can think of currently is through the newspaper, because I don't know of any other ways to get the words out there as far as harm reduction, the needle exchange, or even transportation angles. We don't have many of those unless it comes from out of pocket. But I really don't know. That's why I wanted to bring it to the board because...
Tell me how in the newspaper, because there's been multiple articles on what the Health Department and Monarch and others are doing. How would you say advertise it in the newspaper?
Well, just to let people know that not only inpatient, because that is necessary, but something, a follow-up program, something they can do other than going back to the same old things. And like this gentleman was speaking of with the, with helping to find work, that is good, but it's more than just work, it's a whole lifestyle adjustment. And there, people don't know how to adjust. Excuse me, just from my own personal experience, when I was eight years old, I got high, and for 26 years, I stayed high. And I didn't know there was any other lifestyle. And now that I'm seeing these things, I build a reputation that I want to stay far away from because that's not who I am, that's not who I was, that's just what I had done. That's just, so I picked up a lot of these different traits that are unnecessary and non-profitable that has held me back in my life. And other people can say the same thing, and my heart goes out to them because, just to answer your question, I can't because I don't have the experience to do so, I don't have the knowledge needed.
Just to follow up, as I sit here and listen to you and watch you?
Yes, ma'am.
And I can understand that this is coming from deep down?
Yes, ma'am.
I think what my first comment would be, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
But Mr. Jenkins, sitting behind you, okay? He doesn't wear a badge, okay? And he is sitting on, Dave, where are you? See, I told you I couldn't see you. He doesn't, he doesn't wear a badge, okay? And he is sitting on $1.4 million, okay, to help combat this problem right here. I would ask you to turn around and to go speak with him, and if we need to find you somewhere to go in this facility, to let you have some time with him, because he needs to know, he needs to hear from you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Because how good we do with that money is only going to be as many folks as we can get to, okay?
Absolutely.
And you're sitting, you're sitting on, in my mind, the key to getting the message out, and Dave's sitting on the money, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And it could probably utilize your communication with him.
God bless you. Thank you, ma'am.
No, because he's, he's not wearing a badge, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things you said about Admiral Sound being, that's down at the beach, that's down on the shore, and that's a port, the Admiral Sound.
Right.
And that's what it's talking about, the second place that you named.
No, ma'am. When I sat, I sat through a task board meeting down the road a few months ago, and I was, I picked, I heard, I had heard that people were coming from other communities, other towns into Stanley County to get their drugs.
Probably right.
And my question to that, well, later on in the conversation, it was, it was brought that all of the drug dealers are known, the drug houses are recognized, the runners are known, what they drive are known, who they are is documented, but they're still permitted to sell drugs and deliver them to the community. And I just want to know, why are they known and allowed to get away with it? Why is, why are we fighting, allowing people to get addicted and charge them or have to have grants to help them when we can just eliminate the problem altogether, especially that when it's known where it's coming from? That's my question.
Martha Sue made the best suggestion. While you've got him in this room?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
You saw who he was.
I did.
Go back there and take him out to the lobby and have a long talk with him.
Yes, ma'am.
He will offer some suggestions. I sit on his board, and I know what kind of man he is. He's a good man, and he's got lots of education, and he knows his job well, and I think he can help you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you help him?
Try.
Yes.
Mayor, may I? Kenny, Kendall, I hate to ask you to do this, but there's a, there's a conference room right outside this door to the right. Will you see that they get into that and the lights get on? Thank you. I just think that's, that's where you need to go. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. God bless you all.
Mr. Kimry, before you, before you leave, I just wanted to, I just want to say, I'm sure it takes a lot of courage to come and stand here and talk about this issue, but I think as a community, this ultimately is where it all starts. I mean, we have to, we have to all recognize that this thing is bigger than any one of us, and I applaud you for your courage, and I appreciate, appreciate what you're doing to combat this epidemic, and wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Jenkins, we're not telling you, you have to do anything. Please, please make arrangements if you need to meet at another time. Thank you for what you do, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimry. Moving into administrative reports, your department monthly reports are in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a couple of things. I saw, at least I couldn't, should have called you, but I don't know if it was on yours or if it was on Dana's report, that I saw we were closing out part-time or some part-time rec people in December. Was that on yours, Dana? out part-time or some part-time rec people in December. Was that on yours, Dana, that we?
It was on mine.
Okay. Is it, I'm, come here a second. This was really crazy to me about why we still had part-time people for rec, and maybe as I'm stupid, they'll understand that we need them even into the fall. Is that what we're doing, Lisa? Is it? Thank you. I'm sorry. I knew I read it, and I'm thinking, why do we still have outdoor recreation people in December?
Shouldn't have been outdoor. It was their recreation assistants.
Okay.
And their site supervisors, so they do a lot of the athletic leagues. So we keep like four on at a time.
Okay.
But they can only be on for about six months, and then they have to go off and.
Okay, okay. That fits things together. It just, I don't know why it hit me when I was reading it this time, and I, okay, that's good. Thank you. And the only other thing is, I see that we're still using the Almaral Neighborhood Theater, okay? We have got to, we as a community, we is, we have got to do a better job of publicizing that. I know they put it on Facebook. They put it on the radio, but we've got to use we up here and anybody out there to be able to get the message out, because they've been doing some good movies and some good things there, and the attendance has not been as good as it could be. That place seats 250. We need every time the doors open, that 250 people in there. So thanks for continuing to get things there. Excited about what's coming in the next couple of weeks, but we just, we need to be able to help get the word out. Thanks.
Next is the Main Street Annual Report Presentation.
Evening, and thank you for having me this evening. And I'm going to share some numbers that were shared with the North Carolina Main Street Program. Each year that our Main Street Office puts together these figures by request of the North Carolina Main Street Program. So I am going to share those with you now. Let's see. As soon as I can figure out the slideshow. Ah, okay. So these are overall numbers. I do have more detailed numbers by request. Downtown buildings and property, we had five facades that were redone. We had one building rehabilitation project that was completed. That was, if I'm not mistaken, that is Sudey Soul Food. They did a lot of work in that building. And three public improvement projects were completed that fiscal year. And fiscal year, of course, that's the end of June of 2018 through, excuse me, July 1st of 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Downtown investment, public investment, that is by municipalities, city, county, what have you, two different properties located within the municipal service district. Private investment, of course, that is private individuals, includes acquisitions, sales of different properties. So total investment between public and private, total $2,928,175. Downtown jobs, we had three net full-time jobs gained with 13 new full-time jobs created, 10 full-time jobs lost, and five new part-time jobs created with six part-time jobs lost. Kind of evened out. We lost, mainly it was within retail businesses that we both lost and gained. So it kind of evened out this past fiscal year as far as our downtown businesses, which leads to the next business, downtown businesses. Eight businesses opened downtown, six that closed, and then one business expanded downtown. That would be Elite Uniforms. It was formerly Ethel's Uniforms and Shoes. They, the business owner, closed his Charlotte location and expanded into the downtown Almaral facility. Next, we have volunteer hours. So 351 total tallied volunteer hours for the last fiscal year. That was if volunteers attended committee meetings, assisted with different events, beautification projects, just as a few examples. And the Main Street Program valued those hours at $24.19 per hour, which gave a total $8,491 worth of volunteer hours. That is the report that I have to present to you. I did add some to this report, just to give you a general idea of the day-to-day tasks that we do in the Main Street Office, as well as the committees we serve on, the events that we have worked with both the ADDC organization, as well as city administration and others that have taken place downtown. Also, some figures on the usage of Market Station, the event venue that the ADDC owns and operates. So those can be found. I have a link to those on the Almaral Downtown Development Corporation website at almaraldowntown.com. Under News and Events, you can find 2018, 19 Annual Report. And you can feel free to read those figures in your time. Are there any questions for me?
I have a follow-up. If I ask you what Main Street Four Point Approach Plan of Work is, what is that?
Sure. So the Main Street Program and following the Main Street structure, we have four subcommittees. So they are different components of Main Street. So there's Economic Vitality, which centers around business recruitment, business retention, support of existing businesses. Design Committee, they work with beautification efforts. We're also incorporating, we're working on incorporating more building design, public art, those type of elements. Promotions Committee, those are the folks that do the promotion of the ADDC, the Main Street, the downtown, different programs to help, you know, social media, events, those types of things. So that promotions covers that. And Organization is the committee that works with volunteer recruitment, recruits board members, works with the structure of the ADDC, working on things like our vision statement, things of that sort. We're the nuts and bolts of the organization, if you will.
And I guess the other, last question I have is, and I didn't see anything on here, and I didn't look, I did not go to your website to look, but when I saw it was on today's agenda, how many board members do we currently have to ADDC?
So right now, I am at 10, but we can have up to 13 on our board. So we are looking to recruit a couple more board members to the group.
Who's the current chair?
Current chair is Melanie Hollis, the Director of Stanley County Public Library.
Joe, out of the 351 volunteer hours, approximately, how many volunteers is that comprised of? Approximately a dozen, two dozen?
I would have to look, because it depends. Larger events such as the Wine Festival, we of course had more volunteers. I mean, we have a few that volunteered a lot of different things, but overall, I would say, I mean, anywhere between, I mean, I would say, this is just popping off the top of my head, I would say maybe around 30.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
And that depends, that includes everyone that serves on the subcommittees, folks that just show up to plant flowers, or show up to help out, you know, at Wine Festival or Bonanza, things of that sort.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, update on parking improvements at the E.E. Waddell Community Center.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to provide you with a really quick update on where we are with the parking lot improvements at the E.E. Waddell Center. So I have spoken with Stanley County, Stanley Community College, and have gotten the MOU signed back from them. They just got back into class, the heavy equipment operators just got back into class last Monday, the 13th. So they're get, I called in the utility locate today, so they'll come out and do that. The goal is to start work the first week in February.
Good deal.
So we are moving along with that. And I'd also like to go ahead and give you an update on the HVAC system that's being installed there. We have contracted with Miles McClellan to do the design build for us. They are working on the schematic design right now. I'll have to change the single-phase electric service to three-phase electric, and there'll probably have to be some wiring done there as well. So that's where we are on that. The gym will have to be closed the month of May, and it should be finished by June 1st.
And just a comment. So our, I call it our videographer, I don't know if that's what he's really called or not, but he works with the community college for my colleagues' information. And he was over there just acknowledging when you said that the students started back last week.
I saw him.
I saw him, see him as I looked at him. So they're out actually in the field.
Yes.
On the equipment, Monday, Wednesdays.
That's correct.
So when we think about, there's a lot of weeks between now and June, there are a lot of weeks, but if they're only out there on equipment two days a week, depending on weather, we hope to have it done by June, right?
Yes, that's correct. And not to mention that they don't even go till June, they only go till May.
That's right.
So that's where we are. But I'll keep an eye out on that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your consent agenda is in your package. Anyone have any one thing they want to approve?
Move to approval.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Townsend to approve the consent agenda.
And within that, within that consent agenda is the appointment of John McIntyre?
Yes, that's the consent agenda.
Okay, so that, okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under unfinished business, David, we have a code violation update on 503 Old Charlotte. Are you comfortable doing that in open session, or do we need to be enclosed?
It would probably be preferable to be closed. But I can do, I think I can do it and talk around it enough to be in an open session.
Okay, come on up if you can then.
Mayor, if it's okay, you can contact me and I talked to Michael also about finishing up the matters that I was engaged in that will not be finished by the end of the month.
Come on up here.
So I've got a form for everybody. I'll pass it around.
Sure.
What I'm working on.
Thank you, sir.
I have one. Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, as discussed, I think it was back in November or December, I don't recall exactly. The complaint is prepared. You have approved an open session by unanimous vote, the filing of the action. When you read the information under item one of the report from me, you will notice that I've outlined with particularity exactly what's going to happen and when. Those dates, as early discussed, you have not really changed any. The only thing that slowed us up at all, and the mayor's aware of this, and some of you all may also, is my, the building I'm currently occupying, the roof collapsed in the back and destroyed two-thirds of the building, and I lost my computers and everything else, and I've had to get another place. It's taken an awful lot of my time. And I finally have located someplace that was no place that was readily available. We've had to outfit. We're still not out. And then the regional bank that owned the building evicted us on top of that. So I'm trying to wrestle with that right now. But anyway, if you read that, I'll be glad to answer any questions concerning that. But Mayor, I don't know, they may not have been aware of some of these other matters. Here on a treetop, I got the lease today from staff, so I will get the addendum prepared for that and get it to Mr. Ferris. One thing I do want to bring up, we'll take action on your part, I was contacted by a gentleman named Stan West, and he's working with a local attorney here. And years ago, and I remember it, Joe Carter, and I think this was College Park subdivision, I can't recall, I think that's what it was.
I think it was Crystal Village.
Crystal Village, that's right, Crystal Village. There was a deed to trust placed on that subdivision to secure the performance of a bond. And as far as I know, all that has long, you know, been gone. And that deed to trust probably should have been canceled of record, and it is not. And they're doing some real estate work out there, and they need a release or something from that deed to trust. But it needs action. I need your permission to do that.
Counsel, I'm sorry, get a question?
Now, are we acting only on the item that's on the agenda as far as 500 Charlotte Road, or?
Well, this will be my last.
We can take out the other item.
This will be my last meeting. I thought I'd just go ahead and give you a report on everything. So Old Charlotte's initially, and I'll get, I don't think Kevin's.
Carolina Treetop Council has already approved.
Yeah.
College Park, this is a new request that has come to David. To be honest with you, I don't know that anybody knew it was still out there. I mean, that, that had probably been built, what, 20, 25 years ago, Ms. Lauter? How long you been out there?
Seems like 25 years.
I don't know any reason why council would hold the bond on that location, because it's been, the roads have been built, sewer's been put in, the water's been put in. That's the reason you typically hold it for.
I think at that time, my recollection was that I think Mr. Carter, Joe Carter, was doing all that, I believe.
He did, yeah.
And it was to secure the performance of that, but it's long been done. It's in the city lim, I don't know if it was even in the city limits back then. It may have been outside.
He had, he came to council to have an annex so that we could, he could put it in.
Yes. So I see no reason, we can either cancel the deed to trust because it has been performed, or we can release, what Mr. Doby and I used to always do, we would just release all the real estate from the deed to trust, and that will satisfy Mr. West if we do that.
To release it versus canceling it, to release it.
Well.
Is it a partial release? Is it like a partial release?
He has not given me the legal description yet of what he wants released. So I don't know if it's the entire area out there or what it is.
There's been some legal issues with the family.
Okay.
And, and things have been held up. I don't know about this issue, but.
Right. He didn't tell me what the motivation was for this.
Might want to check on that.
I believe he wants it canceled.
Well, that is fine. I have no problem canceling. I don't think it's even in effect anymore. I think it's been over with.
Counsel, I think it would be appropriate who give Mr. Beaver permission to do it as it proceeds in the process. I'll entertain a motion if that's what you wish to do.
So.
Motion by Councilmember Hollis, second by Councilmember Lauter, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
So this is to cancel it?
Yes, if that's what, if that's what you, if that's what you deem appropriate, that's the way we're taking action.
I'll get back to Mr. West this week and get that taken care of for you.
All right. Number four, I would have to refer to Mr. Ferris on that. A lot of these things are things that go through staff that we don't see.
Yeah.
Mr. Ferris, any comments on that?
Should any of these be closed?
Michael, I don't know if you got your copy, did you? You were not in town.
Just a minute. He was asking if he.
Should any of these?
I haven't seen anything yet that is, most of these I've already, some of these I've already informed you.
Yeah.
We don't know about many of them.
Well, a lot of these are just staff.
Number four, staff typically handles.
Right. I mean, number four, number five, I'm not familiar with that, but a lot of these things come up on a daily basis, which is why we need, you know, attorney services. So number four is just something I've been dealing with the property owner on, and trying to come to some resolution as to the level of the city's involvement or not having any involvement. And that's why I went to Mr. Beaver on that particular issue.
When you arrived at office, Mr. Ferris, I emailed, I don't remember if I emailed you or Mr. or the mayor, but I emailed to one of you the letter. And basically what it says, there's a private controversy going on out there. They thought the city controlled Hill Street, the section of Hill Street they're referring to is not city-controlled. I gave them my legal opinion. I stated the reasons why. One reason we can tell it's not city-controlled is concrete street. I've been here for 42 years. I talked to the mayor about, we've never had a concrete street in my lifetime that I've been here. So I'm positive it's a driveway, you know, some kind of private drive.
It's unopened right of way.
Yeah.
Never accepted, never maintained by the city.
So just to clarify, 503 Old Charlotte Road, we're going to discuss that in closed?
I can if you want me to.
I mean, is that what we're, because I'm just trying to.
Let council decide what they want to do.
Well, it's already been approved. You all have already acknowledged it in open session.
We need to.
Nothing, I mean, nothing. You've already authorized it, yeah.
If council needs to go in closed session, we will. If not, well, he can do it right here.
I don't see there's, okay.
We'll be filing the complaint. I need to get up with Mr., I thought Kevin's going to be here, and he's not here. So I'll get up with him.
Kevin is here.
Oh, he is?
Kevin is here.
Oh, there you are.
Kevin's always here.
Do you have any idea?
I'll get to him tomorrow, and I want him to review the complaint that we're ready to go with, and make sure that I've got it accurate. That's all I want to do.
So is that the only report you got from 503 Old Charlotte Road?
We're going to file a complaint. We're going to file a motion. I still stick by the February, April possible court dates on that, as discussed earlier. You all have come back in open session, authorized me to do this.
We have.
I do need to get a certified copy of the minutes where you all authorized me to do that, because that's the resolution, basically.
I'd be glad to help you with that.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what this request from the attorney? Do you have any idea what this request from the Attorney General's office is?
She called me and left me a message, and it's something about, the way I interpreted it was something to do with NC Highway 2427 out in the area where Bernard Drive is perhaps. I know they're rerouting part of that land, and it was sort of a, it didn't sound like it was anything.
I would, I may be wrong, but I would envision they maybe have, you may be have to do some paperwork since it's a city street, they're going to be working on our street.
That may be what it is, she did not tell me, and she's supposed to call me back, yeah.
You said she contacted you some time ago, approximately how?
In December. In December. She left me a phone message, I called her back, missed her, left her a phone message, she called me back and left me another phone message. She was going to be out of the office, but she would get back with me after the first of the year, I have not heard from her since then, but I'm sure when they get ready, they'll contact me. And I'll bring it to Mr. Ferris and the mayor, and he can bring it to you all and get whatever approvals we need to get on that.
And then the abandoned railroad council is aware of that, because I've mentioned it to you before, the deed, when it was recorded, did not have the correct description on it, and Mr. Beaver is, is doing another quick deed to try to clear that up.
What happened was, there were two maps, and that's where your old abandoned railroad track is there, that's used as a trail. And the description they gave us only had one map, and there was actually two maps, and they fit together. So I talked to Wally Safer, Lynn is retired, as you all know. I talked, then I called the gentleman, I missed him, but I left him a message, and I sent him all the documents, the maps and everything. I'm still waiting to hear back from him, that was done in December. And.
Counsel, on the back page.
Colleen, I got all the stuff into Colleen that I need to get into her on Friday, and the only thing I'm still left to get into her is complete January and then anything we do after that, and otherwise, she's got everything she needs. And I'm working with a gentleman at the publisher of the city's ordinance book, he wanted some language having to do with your nonpartisan voting. I think it was the introduction to it more than anything else, and he and I were working on that, I think his name is Niles, isn't it, Michael?
It is.
Niles something, yeah, and I'm working him on that. The only thing I would ask you to do, I think it would be appropriate, at whatever juncture you deem appropriate, I don't think I can be running around out there, I probably shouldn't say this, like Rudy Giuliani or something. I think I need to have some kind of approval to continue these things, because technically, at the end of the month, you know, you'll have a staff attorney, and I will no longer be city attorney, so I probably just need some kind of acknowledgement that it's okay to continue this, it doesn't have to be something real formal, unless you would like me to turn this over to the staff attorney, I'd be glad to do that.
I think these that you're working on, you probably should finish, in my opinion, counsel, what's your thought?
Just are these, is this all that he's had?
There's one thing I'm fixing to bring up to you that's not on here, that the council is aware of, was I met with Dent Hall Turner.
Oh, yeah.
Last week about the deed, we were redrawing the deed at the old police department.
Yeah, I'll be doing, yeah.
Council's aware of that, I met with him, and he just sent that back to Jay and myself, I think yesterday afternoon, so he's.
He already surveyed it?
He has, he has it together, and we'll get it to you so you can get those recorded, get it ready for us to record.
What you're referring to is that you're bifurcating the old police headquarters into the vacant part and the building part, and you're going to contemplate selling the vacant part, is that correct?
No, we're actually, we're contemplating selling it all.
Oh, okay.
It is because of the restriction.
The environmental things that are coming, yes.
Yeah, if you will bring that resolution back to council.
I will, I'll get it up to you.
Counsel, have any other questions on any of this? David, thank you very much, we appreciate.
We will be filing the complaint on Old Charlotte this week.
We appreciate what you've done for us, we thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Number 15, discussion of Alma Business Center Infrastructure, we're going to delay that since we're going on a tour tomorrow. Unless council has some comments, we'll put that off to the next agenda. Okay. Moving into new business, introduction of Fire Chief Pierre Bruton. Michael, I'll let you formally introduce him, I know most everybody met him Saturday morning, Mr. Bruton, you want to come up?
Sure, as Chief Bruton's coming forward, probably repeating a lot of what everyone already knows, what's in the news release, but went through an extensive process to fill the police, Fire Chief vacancy from when Chief Oak retired, and go through a pretty detailed, arduous process to make sure we find the right person for Almaral, and we've done so in Chief Bruton. He has worked 30-plus year career in Spartanburg, South Carolina, rose to the rank of Assistant Chief in that department, and it's about, I think, as I recall, about double the size of Almaral's department, and they're also, or maybe a little bit larger than that, but also a single Class 1 ISO rated department as well, and of course, we have an inspection coming up very soon, so. Looking forward to, as mayor said, a lot of you met him this weekend, looking forward to working with Chief Bruton over the years, so, chief?
Mr. Ferris, distinguished mayor, council, great citizens, I am honored to be here. I am honored and humbled that I was chosen for this position. My goal, no different, is than anything, is to serve people, and in serving people, serve all people. So as we move forward, I thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you very much. We know you're going to have to hit the ground running.
I was told that, mayor.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Number 17, consider approval of the fiscal year 1920 pavement preservation street plan.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bramble, and second by Councilmember Lauter, does anyone have any questions on that, or do you need time to go and solve it?
I've looked at it, I just have a question for Ross, I'm sorry, Ross. As, but Ross, as he's coming this way. No, no, as, as he's coming, as he's coming this way, I will tell you that the one thing that I've heard more of lately is, when are we going to pave some streets, when are we going to pave some streets, okay, so I've, and I talked to them about which streets, some are state and some are ours, but I had someone come into county, into town about 10 days ago, who knows about local government, and that person said to me, don't you get any Powellville funds? And because they knew to ask those kinds of things, I said, yes, we do, and we turn them as quickly as we can get them, okay? The only question, and I said to this particular person, I said, we have, this is before the agenda came out, I said, we have a plan, and we have, how many miles of road in City of Almaral?
Approximately 122.
Okay, so I said to him, 100, but I, I said, based on the, based on the plan that we have now and the money that we're able to put into it, we had a report a couple of years ago, and I don't know how many it was, it would take us 60 years to do pavement on all that we were doing at the rate we were doing. And this person said, and why is that, and I said, you know what, you don't live here, but thanks for making me, challenging me on this, because folks that live here challenge me on this all the time. And then I, I said to this person, and I have said to other people, if, if people are willing to give us a penny on the tax rate, we could do a lot with 100 more thousand dollars, okay? So you've answered the question, we have 122 miles of city-maintained roads in Almaral, is that correct?
Paved.
Paved roads in Almaral. And this year, we've got 8% of it, at 10 point, about eight, is that right? 10.45, so I, I say that, and it's, it's not throwing you under the bus, because we are all responsible for it, but it costs money to do it, is that correct? To the point, to the tune of what you presented us, so that people hear and see it, 10.45 miles will be improved at $275,000.
Correct.
And help me if I'm not wrong, that's two and three-quarters cents about.
I don't have a calculator.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So people need to hear that, so I didn't, I just wanted you to verify what I knew, because folks ask me that all the time. Not just at church, at the grocery store, at the laundry mat, I mean, it's everywhere, okay? How much did we do this past year?
Last year was about 250,000.
About how many miles?
I can't remember.
Okay, but 250?
Again, it, based on the formulas that we used, council last year decided to do a 50-50 blend. The year before that, we did all preservation, we spent the money most efficiently to touch as many lane miles as we could, but that doesn't pave our bad streets, it keeps our good streets good. So that's where we, I went with the 50-50 blend this year, and so these are the streets that you see. But you do see the difference in the number of lane miles that we're touching with preservation compared to a two-inch milling field. There's a big cost difference.
When do the consultants come back and do?
I hope to have it in next year's budget, to do a reassessment and reevaluation of all of our streets. Again, this last plan was done in 2015, so.
At that point, we'll know how far behind we're slipping?
Yes, we will know what our current PCI index is based on what it was five years ago.
So at least we'll have something to compare it to at that point.
If you remember, and not that I'm, I didn't bring it up, but five years ago, they recommended a million dollars a year just to keep our streets at that level, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Ross's question, real quick, before you step down, Crestview Drive, what did we do up there last year? Was that not the, the one street that we completely did?
Two years ago, we did a full-depth reclamation, that, that was, that is the most, I guess you could say, I don't want to really call it critical, but that is, that is the, a failure of a street.
Okay.
It is a total rebuild of a street. We did it two years ago just to show council what full-depth reclamation is, we've never done that in the city before. It was a small section of street with a little bit of impact to residences, to give everybody an idea of what it really entails.
So what are we doing on, on this report here?
None.
Okay.
But it says, it begins at Crestview.
Are you asking about Crestview?
It's on the, Crestview Drive, beginning Crestview Lane, ending at Woodcrest.
Which page are you on?
Second page, second.
Okay, so that would be.
A rehab sheet.
There is a Crestview Drive and a Crestview Lane, there's two different streets.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this would be on Crestview Drive, and it's just a small portion, a small block there between Crestview Lane and Woodcrest.
Looking at the bottom of page two there, it'd be nice, says Wolf Avenue, beginning at Park Ridge and ending at McCurdy. Sure would be nice to do something with 110 Park Ridge. So we can get that, so we can get that, that, that road refitted.
You're talking about that, you're talking about the house.
Yeah.
You're suggesting one of those big machines run along through the house?
I didn't say that, we own camera, I didn't say that.
Any further questions on the?
Dr. Brown said that.
I'd just like to say East Main and PD Avenue look the best that I've ever seen them, and I, you know, I'm 100 years old, so there's something that you're doing that I've never seen before with asphalt, I don't know what it is, but it's wonderful.
Well, now, East Main is a DOT street, they just, they just did the milling field, but we pushed them, we pushed them hard, so. PD Avenue is a city street.
Looks wonderful.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Appreciate it.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 18, consider dates for a city council workshop on a downtown parking plan. This will be the next phase of the plan that staff brought to us a few months ago, and they wanted to start talking about what our next step is. Council has given, they've given you a couple of dates, what are your thoughts? I think everybody was good on the third, except Bill.
I think the third's great.
You think third's, third works?
Yeah, third works.
There we go.
You going to be gone, or you going to come?
No, I'll be there.
All right, so.
What, the one that you decided?
March the 3rd at 6 o'clock, is that good with everybody? I'll entertain a motion. So, motion by Councilmember Hall that we hold a parking workshop on March the 3rd, which is a Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Second by Councilmember Lauter, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 19 is the quarterly business update.
Mayor, I'd ask for some additional information over and above what you're used to seeing in that report, so we're just going to hold that off until the next agenda, until we get some more information. I think what we've seen in the past is more retail-oriented, because it's a little easier for us to track. But obviously, we know through some of the projects that our Economic Development Department has been working on, that there are a whole lot more jobs that are being created than what has typically shown up on the report. So we're trying to revise it, and it takes a little bit more digging and research, but I think what we'll have is probably a more complete report of some of the job creation during these time periods. So that's what we're trying to collect, and we'll have that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Number 20 is a reminder, we will leave here tomorrow at 12:30. The bus will pick us up in the parking lot at 12:30 tomorrow to go to Monroe, if you intend to go with us. And last I heard, everyone was going, is everyone still going?
I will not be able to.
Okay.
I'm questioning.
Okay. All right, 12:30, come around the horn, Mr. Ferris.
Yes, first of all, I want to commend Lisa Kaiser for the recent City of Almaral employee service, the Day of Service, which took place last Friday, it's the first such event, and really, that whole concept started with Lisa, and she organized it and put it together. We had 50 volunteer opportunities, and all 50 slots were filled, so, and that was our first shot, didn't know of 50 volunteer slots to do volunteer work at various agencies, such as Esther House, the Community Inn, I believe is one, but we also did some work on our own facilities, such as park trail work. So 50 employees participated last week, and it was just an outstanding event, so thank you, Lisa. The other thing I want to mention, sort of along those same lines, is I hope everyone's had a chance to look at the most recent employee newsletter. There are a lot of really good articles and features in there about employees that have been complimented from various outside agencies and regular citizens, and it's just really nice to see some of the things. I mean, it is our job, but there's, you can do your job and just do the minimum, or you can really do it with care and concern and compassion, and some of those stories are really great, makes me proud to be a part of an organization like that, so. Haven't seen that, please review some of those stories, it's, it's really, it's really nice to see. And that's all I have.
Mr. Townsend?
First, I want to thank council and staff and everybody else that has supported the MLK breakfasts this past Saturday. I think that was very impressive to see the city supporting it in such great numbers, you know, just speaks for the organization itself. Thank you on that. I also want to thank everybody like Michael, who was involved with the Employee Day of Service. I actually had fun. Got some work out of Ross. Or better yet, he got some work out of me. But that's a great event, especially just at the end of the day when all the volunteers commenced at the Waddell Center and just told what they experienced and stuff throughout that day, and then got some words of wisdom from our city manager. That was, that was a great day, and that's something that I hope that we continue in the future. Another, just a question I got, do we know at this point if everything have been settled on the deeds and stuff for the land affecting the hotel project? Because that's something that we talked about probably three or four months ago.
I can tell you that I have heard verbally that it was ready to move forward, but they have not yet put the deed before Michael or myself to sign.
I didn't see it on the county commissioner's agenda tonight, that's why I asked, and I hadn't heard nothing.
I can tell you that it has to start with us signing it, and until the lawyer presents it to us, and it's not Mr. Beaver, until the lawyer presents it to us, it will not move forward. But I understand everybody is on board with it, we just got to do all the signatures.
I tell you, we, I hope we don't drag our feet too much as local leaders and lose out on that, you know, because that's, seem like we've been kicking, not us as a city, but I feel like we kicked, kicked that can down the road too far, too long.
I got to agree with you, it's gone on way too long, but it wasn't the city that were delayed.
Yeah, absolutely. And last but not least, at the last council meeting, I did make reference to some of the links on the city website. Unfortunately, those links have not been updated, we still got the outdated tax rate in 2002, from the year 2002, and we still got a lot of other outdated information. I just hope that staff take serious what, what are we asking, we needed, we need updated information on our city website. We never know who might visit it one day. In particular, you know, I know we say we aggressively marketing the Roosevelt Ingram Park, you know, just out of curiosity, you know, sometimes curious minds want to know. I tried searching for information about that property for sale, and I can't even find it on our own city website. So if somebody was interested in it, I want to know where they're going to find it, you know?
Anything further?
That's it.
Ms. Hughes?
Just one item.
Just one item. I asked Nikki to place an article that I saw in the Stanley News &amp; Press from Dr. Mike Walden about our mini cities and our future. It's an excellent article. We've talked about mixed use for the property that we have acquired. This talks about mini cities. There's some that are being developed for retirees in specific states, and there's one being done now in Pittsboro, in Chatham County, or Chatham Park in Pittsboro, so perhaps that might be something we need to reach out to if that's the avenue we decide to go down. But it's an excellent article, what mini cities are about, so.
Well, you hit a nail on the head. We're hurting for a developer to help us with a retirement village. Exactly.
That would be a good option.
How many times we've had people come before us mentioning that? Ms. Aldrich?
Just a couple of things. First and foremost, I understand we had a, there was a great turnout on Saturday for the breakfast. I apologize for not being there, but I understand the food was wonderful and the fellowship was great as well. So again, I was out of town and could not attend, but I'm glad everybody enjoyed that special event. Another thing, a week ago last Saturday, you know, when you think about a community like Albemarle, we are a very, we are a great city and a great community. We have a police officer who unfortunately is battling brain cancer. And, you know, Saturday a week ago, two days before that, on a Thursday, I guess it was, Captain David Hunt of the Albemarle Police Department kind of threw out this pledge drive, and it was kind of quick and last minute, and he pledged to get on top of the Albemarle Police Department until they raised $5,000 for Officer Mike Martin to purchase a wheelchair device for him to use. And, you know, Chief Doolin, everybody at the city was in agreeance that that should happen, which it did, and the City of Albemarle really turned out. It was an unbelievable event. I think over $16,000 was raised for Sergeant Martin, and I just want to, I've known Sergeant Martin personally since about 1987, and he's had an unbelievable effect on this community. He's touched many lives. He was very instrumental in the DARE program when it was first initiated. So prayers continue to go up for Sergeant Martin and his family. And again, thanks to the mayor and my fellow council members and everybody in the community that came out, donated for that special event. And Sergeant Martin, if you're watching or listening, we love you, we're praying for you, and thank you.
Ms. Allen?
I'd like to go last, please. Thank you.
Ms. Lauter?
I'd like to go last.
I'll go, Ross.
I'm teasing.
You have anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As we continue to look for ways that we can shorten people that speak, I hope we are still looking at that. It's getting out of hand. It got out of hand. And I don't know who decides that.
Council has the authority to limit the amount of time a speaker has. You do have that authority, and you, you as council, need to decide if you want to limit the amount of time that someone has to speak.
Could you agenda that?
Sure. Are you referencing, like, from the communication that I sent out after the last meeting?
No, she actually said something to me that night of the meeting, and she was asking about time. That's when I reached out to School of Government, because you asked about, can we limit what they can speak about? And I did, I found out we can limit the time, but not the topic. Anything further, Ms. Lauter? Mr. Bramlett?
I want to follow up on what Martha was talking about. I would bet you that there is not a rural community in North Carolina any better positioned to come up with this mini city as well as we can. We have the, we have the educational component, and coupled that with the ideal location for retirees, to combine those two elements into our major push, I think we can be a mini city truly in what he's projecting. And keep in mind, he may be wrong, but he's one of the most educated people in the country in what he's talking about. If we don't do something like that, we could find ourselves in real trouble going on down the road. But I think we do have that opportunity, and we're ideally positioned to do it. Thank you for bringing it up.
I forgot one thing, and that was the nice letter that Nikki wrote. I think it was to council members about some of the, needing a little money to pay the electric bill or something over at the, we need to deal with that.
You did, you did deal with that tonight. That was in the consent agenda.
We wanted to deal with that. Okay, sorry about that.
All right.
Number 12.
Mr. Whitley?
Just a couple of things. I apologize for missing the last meeting. We were traveling, but I wanted to mention the MLK breakfast was probably one of the best I've been to. It seemed to be the best attended room, appeared full to me. So, I mean, it was, the weather, I guess, had something to do with that, but that was a great speaker and great food. At some point, I don't know if anybody else on council would like to, I'd like to get an update on recycling, how that's going. I don't know if we need waste management to come in or not, just kind of an update as far as participation. You know, at one time, right after we started, they were having a problem with outlets for the material they were collecting. I'd like to know if that's still an issue, if they're having a problem locating somewhere to take all these things. Also, the...
Before you go on, I read somewhere that Malaysia started sending that stuff back to a bunch of countries, to a bunch of countries.
And I don't know how to answer that right now. I know a lot of waste management companies have dropped glass. That may be something we have to see in the future.
Our daughter and family live in Atlanta, they don't recycle glass anymore, so it goes in landfill.
You got something to say, Ross?
I could see him.
I mean, just to answer your question, Waste Management, early on when we first entered the contract, their local MRF close to Charlotte closed down, and they quit accepting recyclables. Waste Management actually has their own MRF in Winston-Salem. So all the recyclables that are collected here in the City of Albemarle, Waste Management takes to their MRF in Winston-Salem. So that's, to answer your question, and we haven't received any information where they're having any issues or gonna take away glass. Matter of fact, the last conversation I had with Marilyn Wells, everything seems like it's still gonna be on go.
And I think that's the reason, because you hit the nail, they have their own.
They have their own. Now, it was...
Somebody's taking it, somebody else is.
And if you remember, there was an increase because there was a contractual agreement that we had where if something like that happened, we had an increase in their service that they provide, but they do have their own MRF, and they are continuing to take our recyclables there. Now, as far as percentage of people that are actually recycling, I can check into that. I don't see where it would be much different than what it was before. We are very fortunate that we've got a lot of people that participate in it.
It does, does seem like it. I think part of what they were gonna do when we signed the contract was some marketing and education and that kind of thing. Has any of that happened?
You know, there was initial push, I don't know what's happened recently. We run within our utility bill stuffer, you know, what can be recycled, what cannot be recycled, how cross-contamination can affect what can be recycled, and then there's, you know, because of one of the problems with recycling nationwide, it's not just been that China and some of the places are not accepting it anymore, but also that people are throwing away a lot of things in recycling on good faith. They're trying to do the right thing, but what winds up happening is things go in recycling that don't belong there, and, but people think they do, and they think, well, if it can be recycled, that's great. What it causes for the recycling companies is extra time and labor and disposal costs for things that can't be recycled. So we've had, we've had pretty good luck with getting some of those statistics from Waste Management in the past, and so I'll ask them, Ross and I, we'll talk to Marilyn, get some information about recycling, and last time we had that, it was, I can't off the top of my head recall the percentages, but it was a very good participation rate. And it is one of those things, the more you stay with it, future generations, they'll grow up knowing no differently, and hopefully, over time, it just continues to grow.
Well, some feedback, you know, some feedback from them occasionally as far as, are they getting contaminated? I mean, are people, once in a while, I'll ride down, I'll see a blue container with a lid popped up, and I'll say, that's trash.
Oh, we deal with, we deal with residential issues all the time on that, and, you know, of course, we try to handle them the best we can, best way we can, staff-wise, but, you know, we notify the resident by tagging their can, saying that this, these blue cans are for recyclables only, it's contaminated, it will not be picked up with recycling. Typically, Waste Management will track certain residences. If it's a repeating issue, then we'll either pull the blue can, or, you know, most of the time, the resident will learn that they can't just put contaminated recyclables in a blue can. So we have those issues all the time, but it's really not that bad considering we have 16,000 residents here, so.
And the other thing, on the website, if there's anything on there about recycling as far as what can be recycled and all that, I can't find it. Do you know if it's on our website?
What we would probably do, we could add a link to one of Waste Management's websites. I don't, we don't...
I mean, for example, if I wanted to go see what I could throw away, what number of plastic and all that I could put in there.
We can, we can look into that, add some of that information on there. Again, we do have periodically, we'll put in a mail stuffer on what's allowed and what isn't allowed, and, you know, again, a lot of people think pizza box is allowed, but it's not, so just use that as an example. We probably send that out once a year.
Styrofoam.
It's difficult to legislate things like that because people are gonna do what they want to do with those cans, and I don't know of anything that you can do.
There's not a perfect science to it.
No, there's not an answer.
But we do our best. I mean, realistically, overall, I mean, besides the few struggles that we had, once we started implementation of the recycling program, I feel like we run pretty smooth, considering the complaints that we do get or the issues that we run into, so.
Thank you.
Ross, just a comment on that. I guess there's no way, to what Councilmember Whitley was saying, if you have repeat offenders who literally throw trash in the recycling bin, is there, there's no way we could track that, tag it, and then somehow find those residents, is there?
Not by city policy. Our policy would be is just to remove the can in most cases if it's that severe. And off the top of my head, we've probably had one incident to where it was to the point where we were that close to doing that, but it's cleaned itself up now.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Ross.
You do a good job with that.
We try.
You certainly do.
If Councilman Aldrich, to follow up on that, I'd like to do some DNA testing of trash on the highway and trace down who's throwing that away, if we do that. Thank you, Bill, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
No, I got one more, but in the interest of time, I'd like to talk about trash, but I'm not going to tonight. The only other thing I have is, we had our RPO meeting last week, and I'm chairing that this year, and I have the list of road projects that we're working on right now, the preliminary. We're gonna vote on those probably in May, I mean, March, as far as awarding our points to submit them to DOT. We've got 15 on here right, and we can submit 18, this is Randson Union and Stanley. We can submit 18, and a couple of these may come off to go in a different pot of money, but, so we're gonna need about five more projects. If anybody wants to look at this, I didn't copy it because they're very generic, they're not fleshed out exactly, so it's a rough list. If anybody wants to look at this, instead of making a copy, I just brought it, and you can take a look after the meeting. That's it.
Follow up on that, that's Antson, Olive Antson, Olive Stanley, and just that most eastern part of any county, right?
Not much of you.
That's right, because, I mean, it's changed considerably sort of the last 10 years. Yeah, a couple of follow-ups. Mixed use, I love this article, okay, and it goes to right into what we were talking about with the Albemarle Business Center to a certain extent. As a follow-up with that, we were here two weeks ago on the 20, on the 6th, and then on the 8th, we had a very long, very intense COG meeting, and Mike Manis came to me and said, "I've gotten a call from Mark, what is it y'all are looking for?" And I basically said to him, "A follow-up from you, Mike, on what you said to us at our meeting." So I do know that he has been out of the office, to my fellow councilmembers, he's been out with some sickness, and so he did reach out to me today and said he would be back up with Mark by the end of this week. To that end, at the COG meeting, we heard from the federal legislative liaison, Leslie Mazingo, about the federal action plan for 2021, and I'm gonna leave this with either Michael or with Nikki, that talks about the plan for grants and those kinds of things in the federal year, about when folks are gonna be in session and when they're not gonna be in session, when we should speak to them if we need to, when they're home, and that kind of thing, which is just being published. So I've got all of that to hand out, or to give to either to Michael or to Nikki. Follow-up to, let's see, I've talked about COG. Tonight, when Dave was here, talking about the opioid, and one of their fellow local organizations helping them was Grace Place, do you remember that? What has ever been done with that, or is that still open? And I'm looking right at Kevin, the issue on Church Street.
I don't think it's an issue anymore because there's a church in the building.
There's a church in the front of, right, that's right, there is. And so Grace, that's exactly right, there's a church in the front of it now, so that's taken care of. I guess I hadn't remembered that. Okay, very good. So Kevin's saying, "I'm not even sure," but yeah, that's right, that took care of it because there's a church in it now. At your place, I put a flyer for the Habitat fundraiser, and I was told, and maybe I didn't get it, or maybe I just overlooked it, that it came out to all city employees already, but I would just ask you to consider that if you are here or listening to that about the Habitat fundraiser on February 27th. Some of you may have seen, and I hope you did, and I'm not the only one, that on Facebook there is HGTV, whoever that is, is looking for applications or submissions for that particular TV show to come and redo a local downtown, a small downtown. So I have, I've said something to Joy, is she still here?
Yeah, she's got.
I hope that we will follow through with that, and not to the 13th hour, but go ahead and do it, and do a good job at it, and do whatever needs to be done. There are a lot of people who have mentioned on Facebook, "Let's do Albemarle." A lot of towns in this county have been mentioned. It would be great for us to submit an application for that. And, let's see, and I was out of town on Friday, or I would have been there, but I was playing Mimi on Friday and Saturday, so I missed Saturday with Dexter, and I missed Friday with Lisa, but would love to have been there, will be there the next time with both of those, so, thanks much.
Anyone in the audience have anything to come for council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM. Motion by Councilmember Lauter. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, I hear.